Convening this morning's hearing for the Committee on Culture, Arts and International Affairs. Today is March 20, 2024 here in Conference Room 309. Time is 10:00 a.m. for the purposes of hearing the said Senate bills. First up on the agenda is Senate Bill 2710, S.D. 2, relating to culture and the arts. It establishes the Hawaii Leadership Awards Program to honor individuals who have made considerable and outstanding contributions to Hawaii and serve as inspiration to others, and establishes a permanent archive within the state archives to house the work of each attendee. First up, we have Department of Accounting and General Services.
Chair Tam, Vice Chair Martinez, member of the committee. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify representing Comptroller Regan of the Department of Accounting and General Services. I'm Dr. Adam Jansen, and I am the state archivist and administrator of the archives. DAG stands in strong support of this bill. We think it's wonderful that we are recognizing individuals that contribute. We did want to point out that since this bill was introduced, it went from a leadership award to now one in each of 12 categories. And in order to create that, archives, we're going to need help. We don't have staff to be able to do this justice and look at the larger scope of the other awards that the state does present annually that need to be preserved as well. So we thank you for your consideration of this bill, and I welcome any questions or concerns you may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that we have signed up to testify. Members, any questions? Oh, no, sorry. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to testify on the measure before us? Seeing none, will we order Zoom? Is there anyone Zoom wishing to testify on the measure before us? Seeing none, members, any questions? Chair has a question for our state archivist. So if we were to house all this, the awardees' works, how much money are you expecting us to be allocated to fund this project?
What we're asking for is one archivist that can really focus on acquiring their legacy, as well as the poet laureate, the Aloha Award of Merit, any awards that the legislature gives out. So it's not just this, but one archivist which has an annual salary of $59,000 a year and approximately $40,000 to acquire storage and equipment to be able to digitize and record and gather all of this requested information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none. We're going to go to our next item on the agenda now. Senate Bill 3312, S.D. 1, relating to the state gesture. It adopts, establishes, and designates a shaka as the official gesture of the state. First up, we have Steve Su in support.
Hey, Aloha Chairperson Tam, Vice Chair Martinez, and representatives. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Steve Su. I'm a resident of Kamaki. So I testify as myself. I've submitted testimony. I stand by my testimony in strong support of this bill, and I'll be around for questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. That is all that we have signed up to testify on the measure before us. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 3312, S.D. 1? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Seeing none. Chair will call a recess for decision making. Recession. Okay, reconvening the House Committee on Culture, Arts and International Affairs
Convention House for Committee on Culture, Arts and International Affairs. We're here at room 309, Wednesday, March 20, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. We have several resolutions to be heard today. First one is HCR 96 and HR 80. It's supporting a closer partnership between the United States and Taiwan in values and common goals. The relationship and exchanges between the state of Hawaii and Taiwan and Taiwan's international participation in signing of a United States-Taiwan bilateral trade agreement. In person, giving a testimony would be Mr. Dennis Ling from DEBED.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Dennis Ling with DEBED. Aloha, committee members. DEBED stands in support of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else testifying in person in the audience? Do we have anybody at Zoom? No. Any questions from the members? Okay. We also have written testimony submitted from TEKO in support, and I think that's about it. Members, any questions? Okay, let's move on to HCR 180 and HR 160. It's requesting the governor to declare a cyber harassment and cyberbullying awareness day. We have Mr. Chris Caulfield in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Chris Caulfield, speaking on behalf of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support of these resolutions. In full disclosure, I'm also the office manager for Representative Capella, but I'm burning a couple of vacation, a little bit of vacation time today to speak with you as the Chair of the party's Legislative Committee, which is responsible for developing and managing the party's legislative agenda each year. Cyber harassment is a persistent threat to our society and our democracy. 2018 report published by Statista found that 64% of teenagers in the United States have encountered hate speech on social media. Similarly, the Pew Research Center reports that 41% of Americans have experienced online harassment, with half of those who have been harassed online saying it happened because of their political views. There is a direct correlation between disinformation and polarization, between digital threats and real-world violence. We need to address cyber harassment in order to defend our democracy and preserve our individual well-being, and I'm speaking to you today not only as an advocate from the Democratic Party, but as a survivor. In December of 2019, I came forward as a survivor of a violent sexual assault that happened when I was a student at the University of Hawaii. Shortly after coming forward, I was subjected to vicious and unrelenting campaign of harassment that has lasted until today, four years later. I have received well over 1,000 emails, text messages, and social media notifications attacking me for coming forward, including an astounding number of threats of physical harm and death threats. I vividly remember the first message I received. It said, "It's too bad your rapist didn't kill you. I hope COVID finishes the job." The most recent threat I received came just last week, when an anonymous troll sent me a message saying, "I'm gonna make you suck my gun the way your rapist made you suck their junk." If that's hard for you to hear, good, it should be. Imagine how it feels to receive over 1,500 messages like that, forcing you to relive the most painful experience of your life. Imagine how it feels to be one of the many youth in our community who are degraded for being a racial minority, LGBTQ, or gender nonconforming, which too often leads to suicide. Imagine how it feels to see people call you mentally defective or discuss acts of violence against you and your loved ones on social media, then see those same comments liked and shared by the elected officials who are supposed to be entrusted with advancing dignity and peace for our state. In fact, we just saw in the news yesterday that Senator Carl Rhodes has been receiving death threats on Twitter. No matter what side of the political spectrum you choose, that is not okay. Yet it happens every day, and as much as some people might not like to admit it, a mountain of research shows that there is a direct correlation between digital harassment and real-world violence. That's a fact, and facts matter. We're not just talking about silly comments posted on the internet by a bunch of orcs from Mordor. We're talking about public safety. We're talking about the right to mental health. We're talking about the foundations of our democracy, which we have a steadfast obligation to preserve. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wanted to testify on this measure?
I didn't sign up, but my name is Will Carone, and I would just like to throw my support behind this resolution. It sounds like a really good, solid one to support.
Anybody else from the audience wanted to testify on this measure? Anybody from Zoom? So I guess that, any questions?
I have a question. For the Democratic Party. There is no specific date in this resul. I'm assuming that it's just letting the governor decide a date. Is there one on the books?
I'm not sure if there's a cyber harassment day, like an international or national cyber harassment day that's recognized. That's something we could easily check, and I'm sure we can find it on Google. But yeah, I think the idea is to just let the governor pick a day and then declare it.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Anybody else? Any members? Any of the members have questions? Okay, saying none. I'll give the rest to Chair Tam.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry. Next up on the agenda is House Concurrent Resolution 180, HR 160. Sorry, sorry, wrong one. Wrong one. Wrong one.
36. 25.
Sorry. Next up on the agenda, HCR 36, HR 25. Urging the President of the United States to promptly reinstate funding for the United Nations Relief and Working Agency for Palestine Refugees in the Near East to support its lifesaving and critical humanitarian assistance program to Palestinian refugees. Chair wants to note that we do try, we're gonna plan on stopping at 11:30 in order for us to make it to session, so we would really appreciate if you would be willing to stand on your written testimony, and in the interest of time, we'll be keeping a timer of one minute. What I will be doing is I'll hold up this yellow card when you have 15 seconds left, so you guys can know when your testimony should be wrapping up. Is that okay? Thank you. First up, we have Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Chris Caulfield from the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We are witnessing a genocide. According to the Health Ministry in Gaza, over 30,000 people have been killed in Israel's ongoing war against the Palestinians. Roughly 12,300 of those lost were children, and 8,400 were women. 9 million Palestinians have been forced to flee their homes. The devastation in Gaza is impossible to overstate. The situation has been dramatically exacerbated by the U.S.'s defunding of the United Nations Relief and Works Agency for Palestinians in the Near East, which provides critical humanitarian aid to Palestinian refugees. It's done so since its inception in 1949. The UN RWA's budget has paid for flour for 350,000 families, 14 million food items, mattress pads, blankets, kitchen sets, and so forth. Israel's assault on Gaza is just the latest episode in a long legacy of colonial bloodshed that's left the Palestinian people struggling to get by. We strongly support this resolution. We can't stand idly by while we watch an offensive that's intended to fortify apartheid. And just by the way, we would also ask the Legislature, in addition to this resolution, to pass a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire now.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Ren Patton with the Democratic Socialist of Oahu.
Thank you. My name's Ren Patton. I'm here testifying in strong support of this resolution on behalf of the Democratic Socialists of Oahu. We have been opposed to this war on Gaza since October, when it became clear that Israel was going to use the tragic events of October 7th to exterminate the Palestinians, first by bombs and warfare, and now by starvation and famine. And it weighs so heavily. Am I conscious that my government has the power to do something about this, and it's not? The very, very least we could be doing is making sure that humanitarian aid is getting in to help prevent children from starving. So we implore you to pass this resolution, as well as the other resolution that is making its way through these chambers for a ceasefire to show, let the record show that the state of Hawaii is not with the U.S. government on this. Thank you.
Next up, we have Fatima Rise for Palestine. She's not present. Next, we have Jewish Voice for Peace Hawaii.
Aloha, members of the CAI Committee. Thank you so much for hearing this pivotal resolution today. I am here testifying on behalf of Jewish Voice for Peace Hawaii in strong support of HCR 36, HR 25. Jewish Voice for Peace Hawaii is the local chapter of the largest Jewish anti-Zionist organization in the world. We are a grassroots, multiracial, cross-class, intergenerational movement of Jews in solidarity with the Palestinian freedom struggle. Just yesterday, it was announced by the United Nations that 1.1 million people are on the brink of starvation and therefore imminent death due to Israel's use of starvation as a weapon of war and the continuous withholding of aid trucks from entering Gaza. The UN-backed Integrated Food Security Phase Classification has classified 70% of the people in northern Gaza as experiencing famine. It has also been determined that children are starving at the fastest rate ever documented in the world, with more than 20 children who have already died from malnutrition and dehydration, which is a slow and extremely painful death. Many of us in this room have watched on our phones footage of children starving in real time in the hospital through to the moment they ultimately died. That footage has given me nightmares, as it is identical to footage I grew up in learning about the Holocaust. This is unacceptable. There's been clear-
Please wrap up your testimony.
Sorry?
Please wrap up your testimony.
Okay. Yes, so it is time to say enough is enough and move toward working tirelessly to save as many lives as possible. Please make sure that the state of Hawaii is not with the U.S. on this, the U.S. government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Worker Center.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Serge Alquabilia. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Worker Center, and we stand in strong support of this resolution. You know, 20 years ago, I had a chance to spend three months in Israel and Palestine, and I stayed with a Palestinian family, and just the things that you saw there would really shock your conscience. It's just unconscionable. I had a chance to visit the Holocaust Museum, and you would see images of people being put in cages in the way that people were just being murdered. And you ask yourself, how can you let, how can people let such a thing happen? But I step outside, and I would see the same things happen. And I promised those families that I stayed with that I would speak out, that I would use my privilege, that I would use my voice to say something against it. 20 years later, some, those things are happening again. And I just ask, you know, we'll ask those same questions generations from now. People will ask us, what did you do to stop this genocide? We've got a special opportunity here as citizens of the United States to do something about it, and I just pray and I ask that you please pass this resolution. Thank you so much, members.
Thank you. Next, we have Will Carone.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Will Carone, testifying as an individual in strong support of these resolutions. It should not be controversial to ask to restore funding to a UN agency that is an essential lifeline to a group of people that are being massacred. It should not be controversial to call for a ceasefire when those same people are being massacred. It's up to the Legislature to please take a stand here today and pass these resolutions and schedule the ceasefire resolution in the House as well. Let's show the world that Hawaii stands with Palestinian people, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Cassandra Chi.
Aloha, good morning. My name is Cassie Chi. I'm the pastor of Wahiwa United Church of Christ. I'm joined this morning by other faith leaders and healthcare workers. 49 faith leaders signed a ceasefire statement, calling for an immediate, permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Since that time, over 1,000 more people have been killed in Gaza, and now, as you are probably aware, over a million people are starving there. As a pastor, I cannot serve communion on Sunday, you know, while people are not able to receive their daily bread. So I just implore you all, please, to pass this resolution to give any and all possible aid to people in Gaza. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have David Gierlark. Maybe I pronounced that incorrectly. David Gierlark, or something? Not present. Next up, we have Aisling Kennedy.
Jéjev. Ashleen is Anumdom Augustus Erenachme. Hello, my name is Ashleen, and I am Irish. I am testifying in support of the resolutions. During the Irish famine, at least 1 million people were killed due to starvation and disease. Some believe that these deaths occurred because there was no food available in Ireland at the time. This is incorrect. There was food in Ireland. Irish people were starved to death through man-made famine that was brought about by British policy. It was a purposeful destruction of Irish people by those who were colonizing us. According to the IPC, 1.1 million people in Gaza are facing catastrophic levels of hunger and starvation. This, again, is a man-made famine. It is the purposeful destruction of Palestinians by the people who are colonizing them. This most recent form of collective punishment, Israel's blocking of aid, and now the U.S.'s refusal to restore funding to UNRWA, is a continuation of the 17-year blockade on Gaza, which is widely considered by human rights groups to be illegal. As an Irish person and as a human being, I ask you to please support this resolution today. Gurev Mila Maagiv. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Daniela S. Contralla.
Aloha, committee members. I'm here to testify in very strong support of HCR 36 and HR 25. Over the past five months, we have seen a genocide carried out at the hands of Israel and the United States, with over 31,000 people being brutally murdered and over 13,000 of those being children. Two days ago, the UN-backed Integrated Food Security Phase Classification reported that famine is imminent for at least 300,000 Palestinians in northern Gaza, and at least of half Gaza's population, 1.1 million people could suffer famine by July. One in three children under the age of two years old in northern Gaza suffer from acute malnutrition, and at least 20 people have already died from malnutrition and dehydration. I implore you to please support these resolutions, so we can pressure our government to use our taxpayer dollars to help Palestinians, which are in this situation thanks to us, rather than continue to kill them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Pua Nani Kane Alii.
Aloha, mai kaku. My name is Pua Nani Ke Kaula Kane Alii. I'm a pastor in Konakakai Molokai, and I want to appeal to those who are having a blanket support for Israel based on superficial religiosity or just an understanding of that's what we, that's who we are in Hawaii, that we're all Christians, which is not true. So I just wanted to call for support for the restoration of UNRWA and a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, based on the fact that if we looked at scripture and had a theological understanding, we would notice that all people are God's people. There is not one people group that matters more than another, and when we look at the eyes of those suffering in Gaza, we should see ourselves. So if you are, if you are at a place where you feel conflicted, look in their eyes and know that that could be you, that could be us, that could be Hawaii. We have been denationalized, we have our language stolen from us, and we are seeing that happen also in Gaza. So please support these resolutions. Mahalo.
Thank you. That is all that we have signed up for in-person testimony, but we're gonna move on to those to sign up on Zoom and then return back into the room to see whoever else wants to testify on the measure here. On Zoom, we have Bonnie Brook Bullock.
My name is Bonnie Brook Bullock, and I am in strong support of these resolutions, calling for the reinstatement of UNRWA funding. This pausing was based on unfounded claims that 12 UNRWA workers were members of Hamas. These claims have since been shown to be false. In 1948, by, excuse me, UNRWA was established in 1948 by the United Nations to give aid to Palestinian refugees that were displaced due to the occupation of their homelands. Israel has now been occupying Palestine for more than 75 years, creating an increasing number of refugees year after year. Israel is now committing genocide in Gaza, not only through the use of brutal force and high-tech weaponry, but also by forced starvation. The defunding of UNRWA is part of this forced starvation. Israel has been calling for the defunding of UNRWA for many years now. In January, on the same day that the ICJ ruled that it was plausible Israel was committing genocide, President Biden called for the pausing of UNRWA funding.
Excuse me, can you wrap up your testimony? Your one minute is up.
Okay, Gaza is now facing an unprecedented humanitarian disaster, one that, something our generation has never seen before. By supporting the reinstatement of UNRWA funding, we as a state will be giving the message that we stand against genocide and care about the human needs of all of the world's children and our human family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ken Cho Gronn.
Hi, good morning. I'm testifying as an individual in very strong support of this resolution. I'm just gonna read you a short piece from Jewish Voice for Peace. North Gaza is rapidly sliding into a state of full-blown famine. According to a UN-backed report published on Monday, famine will hit Gaza's northern governance between now and May. Today, 1/3 of children under the age of two in Gaza's north are suffering from acute malnutrition, more than double the number a month ago. At least 23 children have already died of starvation and dehydration. Half of Gaza's entire population, over a million people, are facing starvation. And though conditions are worse right now in the north, Gaza's southern governance could also slide into full-blown famine by July. This is a man-made famine, and the Israeli military has deliberately blocked the entrance of humanitarian aid to the north, attacked aid convoys, and gunned down starving people as they tried to collect what little aid has been managed, has managed to reach them. "We scream, we starve, and we die alone," a 22-year-old said. "Does the world know that we're eating animal food? We live without the basic necessities of life, no electricity, no fuel."
Sorry, can you please wrap up your testimony? Your one minute is up.
Yes, please, please, please. Community supports these resolutions so much, like, we're paying attention, we're watching everything you guys are voting on. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that we have signed up for Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify on the measure before us? Just please come up and just state your name and whether you support or oppose the resolution.
Hello, my name is Dr. Kablowi, and I am also representing 160 healthcare workers who have signed an open letter for Hawaii healthcare workers, calling for a ceasefire, and we are in strong support of the HRC 36 and HR 25. So as a family medicine physician, I support the collective liberation of all oppressed people. I know how precious every life is from those I care for every day. Palestinian adults and children deserve to know they are precious too. That's what the, that the world won't look the other way while they face genocide. As stewards of communities and people's lives, it is the responsibility of family physicians to call for a ceasefire and also to end, call for an end to the starvation. It is a moral imperative to call for the end of murdering of civilians that, that has not just been going on since October, but since 1948. As the death toll goes over 30,000, we cannot continue to stay silent. Please open your hearts and call for what is right, a permanent, immediate ceasefire and the resolution that we are supporting today. And like Ken Cho said, we are watching what you guys vote on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us?
Good morning. My name is Israel Libran, and I am in strong support of HCR 36 and HR 25. Many people in Gaza are facing catastrophic levels of hunger. The Israeli government uses the starvation of innocent civilians as being, as a method of warfare, which is a war crime. As Palestinians are being deprived of humanitarian aid, many, both children and elderly, have already died due to severe starvation and untreated illnesses. I ask that you do everything in your power to alleviate the inhumane suffering before Palestinians face mass death caused by Israel's blocking of aid. We cannot wait for famine to be declared, as the numbers of malnutrition amongst children and the numbers of deaths are on the rise. We need an immediate change of course before it's too late. We need your help in stopping this humanitarian disaster and injustice against the innocent people of Palestine by restoring UNRWA. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us?
Good morning. My name is Kristin Young. Today, I'm here with this group of healthcare workers and faith leaders. I stand on my written testimony that I supported yesterday on social media, because that's where we have to get much of this news. I saw a quote from a mom that said, "Can I cut off my hand to feed my children?" And this is the situation that we're in, so I just ask that, with this opportunity that you have before you today, that you take it and that you do not deny opportunity to restore funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Mary Herbig, and I'm here representing myself, but also my church, Central Union Church, which has a membership of about 1,100 people and just passed a resolution supporting a ceasefire. But I'm here representing, I'm here to ask you to refund UNRWA, and I want to read to you a quote from Martin Luther King Jr., who we consider to be a prophet. "We will have to repent in this generation, not only for the evil words and deeds of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people." And I ask you, as my contemporaries, as my representatives, for you to please, please not remain silent on this issue. Please call for food. Please call for refunding this critical organization that will save lives, save lives of children and of women and of all people who deserve to have safety and peace in their lives. Please, I'm begging you to support this. Thank you.
Anyone else want, okay. Yeah, just, you guys can form a line behind the podium, too.
My name is Kristin Ramsey, and I'm here, excuse me, with all these-
It is a moral imperative to call for the end of murdering of civilians that has not just been going on since October, but since 1948. As the death toll goes over 30,000, we cannot continue to stay silent. Please open your hearts and call for what is right, a permanent, immediate ceasefire and the resolution that we are supporting today. And like Kencho said, we are watching what you guys vote on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us?
Good morning. My name is Israel Libran, and I am in strong support of HCR 36 and HR25. Many people in Gaza are facing catastrophic levels of hunger. The Israeli government uses the starvation of innocent civilians as a method of warfare, which is a war crime. As Palestinians are being deprived of humanitarian aid, many, both children and elderly, have already died due to severe starvation and untreated illnesses. I ask that you do everything in your power to alleviate the inhumane suffering before Palestinians face mass death caused by Israel's blocking of aid. We cannot wait for famine to be declared, as the numbers of malnutrition amongst children and the numbers of deaths are on the rise. We need an immediate change of course before it's too late. We need your help in stopping this humanitarian disaster and injustice against the innocent people of Palestine by restoring UNRWA. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us?
Good morning. My name is Kristin Young. Today, I'm here with this group of healthcare workers and faith leaders. I stand on my written testimony that I supported yesterday on social media, because that's where we have to get much of this news. I saw a quote from a mom that said, "Can I cut off my hand to feed my children?" And this is the situation that we're in. So I just ask that with this opportunity that you have before you today, that you take it and that you do not deny opportunity to restore funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Mary Herbig, and I'm here representing myself, but also my church, Central Union Church, which has a membership of about 1,100 people and just passed a resolution supporting a ceasefire. But I'm here representing, I'm here to ask you to refund UNRWA. And I want to read to you a quote from Martin Luther King Jr., who we consider to be a prophet. "We will have to repent in this generation, not only for the evil words and deeds of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people." And I ask you, as my contemporaries, as my representatives, for you to please, please not remain silent on this issue. Please call for food. Please call for refunding this critical organization that will save lives, save lives of children and of women and of all people who deserve to have safety and peace in their lives. Please, I'm begging you to support this. Thank you.
Anyone else want, okay. Just, you guys can form a line behind the podium, too.
Hello. My name is Kristin Ramsey, and I'm here, excuse me, with all these folks trying to ask you to restore funding. Seems like we always have funding for guns, but maybe we could have some funding for food to try to help the people that we've shot or made to move or made to leave their families. And maybe we feel helpless or we're afraid to be judged because of the wording and the pressure that you would not be supporting of somebody's freedom of religion. But it's not what it's about. It's about being there for people to be safe and have access to their basic human needs. And please, please vote with your heart and do the right thing. Thank you.
My name is Arsalita Imaza. I'm a family medicine physician in the community. I just want to register my position and would like to ask for your support for this resolution. Please pass it. We are supposed to protect life and defend the dignity of everyone. It's just hard to witness all these deaths. And it's still growing in numbers, day by day. And please, you can be very busy. And there's a lot of things you want to do in your job, but just begging to our basic human decency to not allow any more deaths to happen. Children and women are dying right now because of their starvation, and that's on top of the bombings that's still going on. Please let it stop. Thank you so much.
Aloha, good morning. My name is Thomas Quarabam. I'm also a family physician, joining this contingency of healthcare workers and interfaith leaders. I just want to add my voice in support of this resolution, strong support of the resolution to restore funding. I believe others have said it more eloquently already than I have, but I just felt the need to speak on behalf of my duty as a physician. As a family physician, we do have the responsibility to speak out for injustice, advocate for those who are less fortunate than ourselves, and support aid to these folks that we have a role in harming. So I'll keep it short there, but free Palestine.
Hi, my name is Kami Yamuro. I'm here on behalf of the National Alliance for Filipino Concerns. Last month, we held a gathering online of Filipinos, solidarity allies, faith leaders. And we talked about the shared history between Palestine and the Philippines of occupation, of violence. The same tax dollars that are funding human rights violations in Palestine is the same tax dollars that are also supporting human rights violations in the Philippines. So if we have a resolution in front of us like this, why wouldn't we support it? I'm here with everybody today to just really call for your support, to appeal to the hearts and minds of you all here, and also on behalf of Filipinos who really support something like this. Thank you.
Next, okay, go ahead. You want to state your name?
Sure, sure. My name is Reverend Dr. Moses Barrios, pronouns he/him and his, and representing Faith Action Hawaii and Cavalry Lutheran Church over in Nainoa. I just think, you know, looking at the images and the videos, the testimonials of medical workers, I think it's quite obvious that what's happening is wrong, right? And I think Hawaii has an opportunity here to stand on the side of justice. Faith, you know, it should move us. You know, the Jesus I follow is a Jesus of liberation, a Jesus of love, a Jesus that would care for the poor, that would stand in the midst. He was known as the Good Shepherd, the one who would be willing to give his life for those that he loved. So I think we were given this opportunity today to really step into a time to be bold, to kind of know where we stand as a state. And I know some of this is federal-level stuff, but I also realize that if we can do our part, then I think we'll stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us? Anybody else want to testify for a minute and give the team an extra minute?
Hi, my name's Michelle Hyman. I'm an individual person. I'm also a mom. My kid's outside. I'm thinking about what I'm going to feed him for lunch later. Man, this just seems like so obvious. So like, I think we should support this and try to feed people. I don't know if any of you guys got kids or, you know, you're thinking about what you're going to have for lunch later. It's super basic, so if we could support this, that would be great. And if we could get that ceasefire resolution in here as well, that would also be really cool. How's that elevator looking? Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on the measure before us?
Aloha, my name is Fatima. I am with Rise for Palestine. I want to say that I'm really grateful for the representatives that put this in motion. And I also want to say that my family right now is in West Bank in Jerusalem. My aunt escaped Gaza. Her house was bombed, and she moved four times after that. She's now safe in Egypt. It's really important to support the UNRWA because it's the only organization that is helping or was helping Palestinians. And there's not a lot of other organizations that are taking action right now. In fact, a lot of organizations are focused on just continuing to murder my people. So it would be really, really wonderful if we could do something good as residents of Hawaii to actually make a stance and show the world that we're full of compassion and we're full of funding things that are supposed to be funded. So let's not fund a genocide. Let's fund people who are actually here to save lives. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the measure? Seeing none, Chair wants to note that we've received 87 testimonies in support to an opposition. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Reconvening this morning's hearing on the Committee on Culture, Arts, and International Affairs. Today's date is March 20, 2024. Time is 10:30 a.m. Here in room, conference room 309. For the purposes of making decisions on several House concurrent resolutions. First of House Concurrent Resolution 96, HR80, supporting a closer partnership between the United States and Taiwan in values and common goals, the relations and exchanges between the state of Hawaii and Taiwan, Taiwan's international participation and the signing of a United States-Taiwan bilateral trade agreement. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out as is. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HCR 96 and HR80. Chair and Vice Chair, voting aye. Rep. Garrett?
Aye.
Rep. Capella?
Aye.
Rep. Matayoshi?
Aye.
Rep. Sayama, excuse. Rep. Alkas?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Moving on to HCR 180, HR 160. Requesting that the governor declare Cyber Harassment and Cyber Bulling Awareness Day. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out as an HD1. We're going to declare an actual date here for this year, June 21, 2024. And that's how we're going to amend the measure. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HCR 180 and HR 160. Chair and Vice Chair, voting aye. Any member voting with reservation? Any member voting no? Seeing none. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to our last item on the agenda, HCR 36, HR 25, urging the President of the United States to promptly reinstate funding for the United Nations Relief and Works Agency for Palestine refugees in the Near East to support lifesaving and critical humanitarian assistance programs to Palestinian refugees. We've had a robust discussion about this, and I want to thank all the testifiers for coming out here today. But we're going to pass this out as an HD1. Having conferred with the committee as well as others, we're going to change the title to say that, the new title will be reading, "Urging the President of the United States and Congress to Increase Ongoing Humanitarian Aid to Palestine Through UNICEF and the World Food Program." We will be amending the measure to remove all reference to the UNRWA and insert language requesting the President to increase aid to food programs and UNICEF humanitarian aid programs in Palestine. Members, any comments or questions? Go ahead.
I just want to thank every single individual who came out and testified today. And I would also like to thank the Chair for hearing the resolution. I think the main thing is that we are getting some sort of funding into Palestine and that we're making sure that we're supporting individuals who are starving and suffering. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts and your advocacy.
Any other comments or question, members? Any other comments or question, members? Chair, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on HR 25 and HCR 36. Chair and vice chair, voting aye. Any members voting with reservation? Anybody voting no?
I'm okay. I'm going to let this go.
Okay. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. This here is adjourned.